Good evening. Welcome to the Sora City Council Meeting for December 1st, 2025. This time I'll call the meeting in order and I'll ask that you all join Counsel Hardin and I in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, councilors. First up on the agenda is the Consent Docket. Questions, comments, action on the Consent Docket?
I move approval of consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent. Please vote. Consent Docket's approved with a vote of four to zero. That will take us down to Item 6, Public Hearing. 6A, Receive Public Comment Regarding A Request For A MAP Amendment To Rezone Property Addressed As 711 South Ramsey Street From Small Lot Single Family Residential To Two Family And Multifamily Districts CC-25-165. Do we have good notice?
Yes, we do.
Mr. Beebleheimer.
Yes, sir. Mayor and councilors, my name is Henry Beebleheimer with Development Services, and today we're looking at a map amendment for 711 South Ramsey Street. This is to rezone the property from RSS, which is Small Lot Single Family Residential, to RTM, which is Residential Two Family Multifamily. Here's an aerial view where you can see the property outlined in pink. This is just on the east side of Ramsey and between Seventh and Eighth Streets. Here's the property looking at the corner of Eighth and Ramsey, looking to the northeast. There were some existing structures on the property that have been tore down to support the proposed multifamily development that could potentially go in here. This is to, we're rezoning to one portion of this property so that it can be combined with the three lots to the south to create one larger lot for, like I said, a multifamily development. So here's that zoning map where you can see RTM to the north, south, and east of the proposed property, again, outland in pink. On the west side of Ramsey, you can see the RSS or Small Lot Single Family Residential continues as well. Here's the future land use map, which shows this property as high density residential. Rezoning to RTM or Residential Two Family Multifamily does align with the comprehensive plan. I'm open to answering any questions if you have any.
Councilors, any questions for staff?
I'm just curious how that got left out.
Same. I do believe that the property to the south of this was, it was a school, I believe, and I think this property was a single-family house. So I think it was just a different development now proposed to be combined.
It just seems strange that that little piece got left out somewhere.
Yes, sir.
All right. If there's no further questions, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I think we have a representative from the applicant here.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Stephen Goos, Goos and Associates, 113 East Eighth Avenue. Here on behalf of our client, asking for you to approve Planning Commission's motion to approve this. Like you can see on the map, it's just this weird spot that, the house that was there was owned by the school. I don't know when it was purchased within their timeframe, but it's just this one little piece that we're trying to get to match the rest of it.
Thanks, sir. Any questions? I don't have anyone else signed up for this public hearing. Was anyone here to speak on this matter? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Henry, what was the Planning Commission's recommendation for this item?
Yes, sir. On November 4th, 2025, with a vote of four to zero, Planning Commission recommended that the City Council approve the map amendment as presented.
Thank you, sir. Councilors?
Motion to accept Planning Commission recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the recommendation. Please vote. It's approved with a vote of four to zero. Item 6B, Receive Public Comment Regarding A Request For A MAP Amendment To Rezone Property Addressed As 998 South Murphy Street From Small Lot Single Family Residential And Commercial General To Commercial General, CC-25-166. Do we have good notice on this item?
Yes, we do.
Henry?
Yes, sir. So this is a map amendment for 998 South Murphy Street, rezoning from RSS and CG to CG Commercial General. Here's the property outlined in pink. I'm going to go a little more in-depth for this aerial view as the different parts become relevant in a bit. So to the north of this property, we can see the hotel that's been developed. To the north of that, we see the Walmart that's out on Sixth Street. So to the west of the hotel, we have a multifamily development, which are apartments. And then to the west and south of that, we have a single-family neighborhood. Originally, in 2007, there was a PUD passed or planned unit development for this property, for all of it, including this property to the east, to be developed under one PUD or planned unit development. Like I said, that was approved in 2007, and then this hotel was built under that PUD. In 2011, there was a new preliminary PUD that was approved for this property, and then that was a proposed, that proposal was phased, so there has been final PUDs for different portions, including this multifamily development and the single-family residential to the south and west of that. So those phases of that preliminary PUD were approved. So this portion that we're talking about right now was not a part of any of those different final PUDs, so there was not a final PUD to change this zoning. We'll get back to that in a second. So here's the street view. This is from Murphy, looking west, northwest. So you can see that hotel we were talking about right here, and those are those apartments. We're looking at rezoning this field right here with the pond just to the west of it. And here's the original PUD, which is still regulatory for the surrounding properties. The reason this property's owned RSS is because it was originally proposed to be a park, a part of, to support that residential development. Now, this is not the actual layout that was built with this PUD, except this hotel. Everything was built out with a slightly different configuration with the later PUD that was in 2011. In 2011, this portion of the property was proposed to be a commercial use. It was proposed to be zoned CG, which is what we're doing tonight, to support a restaurant or office use. But like I said, since there was never a final PUD to lock in that change, that never actually occurred. Real quick, yep, so the next one, we're looking at zoning. So this is the PUD that surrounds the property, which we've discussed. But this portion of the property, which we're looking at rezoning today, you see that little sliver right at the top, which is CG or Commercial General. That was likely just because the boundaries for the rezoning when the hotel was built didn't quite align with the boundaries for the plat. That happens sometimes. So this would be cleaning that up, zoning the full property CG or Commercial General. One thing I do want to point out on this map is that the surrounding property is still a part of that PUD or planned unit development. Since that, since this was not built with the rest of the development with that PUD or planned unit development, there was a minor amendment to that PUD that was approved administratively to remove this property from the PUD or planned unit development. What that means is now we're just looking at the base zoning of RSS and CG to CG or Commercial General. So that was a lot of context for this rezoning. But now to jump to the future land use map in the comprehensive plan, which does call for this property to be commercial, rezoning to Commercial General does align with the comprehensive plan, and I'm open to answering any questions if you have any.
Councilors? Can you go back to the map? Maybe the, that one. There you go. So that land just to the east of this, of this parcel is vacant still, but it's part, it is currently still part of the PUD?
Yes, sir.
Do you know what the PUD calls to be built there?
Yes, sir. It was a commercial, kind of a commercial shopping center with hotel, not hotels, with restaurants along that pond, kind of overlooking the pond. That was what was originally proposed with the PUD and what would be allowed if it were to be developed unless that PUD were to be amended or the zoning were to change.
And the last time that PUD was looked at by council was 2011?
The 2011 portion was just to the west side of Murphy. So the last time this portion, I believe the last time this portion was looked at was 2007 with the original PUD.
Okay. So the original called for that in 2007, then in 2011, they changed the stuff that actually ended up getting built?
Yes, sir.
Was changed in a 2011 PUD. Okay. And then that 2011 PUD, this parcel was ignored as well?
This parcel was in the preliminary PUD, and then there were, I think, three different phases for a final PUD, but it was not included in any of those finals. So it was in the preliminary plan to be changed, but never actually got changed with the final.
And it was supposed to be a park?
Originally, in the 2007, yes, sir.
In the 2007.
And then in the 2011, it was proposed to be restaurant or office uses.
Okay. So I guess my concern is just that the, the PUD stuff that got built, was there an expectation of what this parcel was going to be, that we would now be changing from what the developer of the PUD or the people who purchased property in that area were expecting it to be something, and now we would potentially be changing that? Does that make sense?
It does. That's something I might let the applicant speak to if they're here, TBD. But as far as the expectation for the neighbors, in 2007, I think it was set that this would be a park to support the residential neighborhood.
I mean, I assume this, the residential neighborhood to the south of this?
The residential neighborhood was originally proposed to be closer to this and a smaller multifamily portion.
Because there is like a playground, there's a couple of parks and playgrounds within that residential neighborhood.
Yes, sir.
And then the apartment complex has its own little rec area too, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And then, yeah, so then this actual layout was locked in with that 2011 PUD, which did have this slated to become restaurant or office uses. So I think the expectation when all of this was built would have been set by that 2011 PUD for this to be commercial. So this does kind of align with that proposal.
Is the applicant who owns this part of the property still the same owner as the property across to the east?
Yes, sir.
Can you go back to the, the next one, I think? Maybe the next, the next, that one. This map does not make, I don't like this map.
I understand that.
I don't like the donut of this map. Like, why would we, why would this not be all part of the same planned unit development? I mean, my concern is if we rezoned a Commercial General right there, again, who knows what gets built? And it was clearly planned for almost 20 years. This whole area was a planned unit development with careful, or somewhat careful, planning of what needed to go in there. So it's a little concerning as to why we would have this one little free-for-all in the middle of this big planned unit development, I guess. But that's probably a question for the developer too.
Yes, sir.
If there's any question there.
What, what we've been told?
You have something, you look like you might have something to say.
What, what we were told for this rezoning is that it's just for the applicant to market the property easier. So there were discussions had of whether there were pros or cons of keeping that PUD in place for the site and just changing it to commercial uses. But reading through the PUD documents that were approved in 2007, there weren't a lot of restrictions put on the commercial properties, nothing that I could find that actually changed those base regulations. I think the PUD or planned unit development was to accommodate that mixture of uses with the hotel, the multifamily, the single-family. So I, I wasn't able to find anything that would actually change with the development of this property if it were to be developed commercially.
Okay. So like, I mean, would, were there design standards in the surrounding PUD or setbacks or, you know, different like factors that were included in the PUD that would then not have to be followed by this parcel?
All the design standards that I was looking through seemed to line up with the zoning districts, so I think the design standards mimicked the zoning districts. It was just those mixture of uses. And I can't say for sure, but that's through reading through those original staff reports and those old documents, that's what I was able to find.
Further questions for staff?
One quick, one quick one. So there's no, no current plan to do anything with this besides possibly sell it to someone else, is that correct?
None that I've been told of.
Okay.
A carefully crafted response.
Yes, sir.
To the best of my record election.
Yep. Anyone else have questions for Henry at this point? At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Do we have a representative from the applicant here? I don't have anyone else signed up to speak on this item, but he there was anybody else here to talk about this? All right, I'll close the public hearing. Henry, what was the Planning Commission's recommendation?
Yes, sir. So on November 4th, 2025, Planning Commission unanimously recommended that the City Council approve the map amendment as presented.
Thank you. Councilors?
I move approval of the Planning Commission recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Planning Commission's recommendation. Please vote. It's approved with a vote of four to zero. Item 6C, Receive Public Comment Regarding A Text Amendment To Chapter 23 Land Development Code Article 6 Land Use Classifications To amend or to add a setback exception to Division 3 Residential Districts Section 23-136 through 23-142 and 23.144 Division 4 Commercial Districts Section 23-150 through 23-153 Division 5 Industrial Districts, Section 23-160 through 23-161 and Division 6 Agriculture District, Public District and University Districts Section 23-170. This is CC-25-167. Do we have good notice on this item?
Yes, we do.
Henry?
Yes, sir. This is a proposed text amendment for the setback exception, which is found in that list of sections that you just read. So we'll kind of get into that by just jumping right in. So first off, this is the current list of zoning districts which allow the setback exception, which we'll get into in just a second, but that list is summarized as our single-family zoning districts and our commercial districts, as well as RT, our two-family districts, and IL industrial light. So the setback exception currently reads, "For a development on property that abuts any local street that currently has 100 feet of continuous right-of-way for the entire block, the front yard setbacks may be reduced by up to 50%." So what that means is, we'll kind of break that down into certain sections, but basically you can reduce your front setback by up to 50% if certain conditions are met. So those conditions include if you live on a local street that currently has 100 foot of right-of-way. So just the basics there is that right-of-way is the property that the city owns where streets and infrastructure are built, and a local street would be a street classification. So your general classifications for streets would be like arterial collector and local. Local is the smallest, smallest designation for a street, generally lower intensity traffic. If you were building a neighborhood, generally those neighborhoods are shared by local streets. Our current code requires that local streets have 60 foot of right-of-way or 50 foot with additional easements. So anytime you have 100 foot of right-of-way, that's generally more than the city would need for a local street, but that does occur a lot, especially in our older parts of the town. So for example, Lewis to the east, Eighth to the south, and Seventh to the north, all are local streets that have 100 foot of right-of-way surrounding City Hall. So that 100 foot of right-of-way, generally more right-of-way than the city needs. So when you have your full setback, those houses are pushed pretty far back, further than you would really need them to be, and planning best practices are to try to encourage those houses to be pulled forward, decreasing those front yards, activating those, activating that right-of-way, like, you know, encouraging that sidewalk or those front porches and stuff. So all of that to say, that's when this comes into play, is whenever you're on a local street, you can get that front setback reduced if you have 100 foot of right-of-way. One point of this that I'll point out is that it's 100 foot continuous right-of-way for the entire block. So that's one of the key things that we're changing, because that means if anyone on either side of the street has closed a portion of that right-of-way, no one for that entire block could use the exception the way it's currently written, which is a situation we've run into with multiple projects coming through the pipeline right now. So that's why we're proposing this text amendment. We'll get to the zoning districts it applies to in just a second. So jumping down halfway down the slide to the text amendment, "For a property that, for the full length of the property, abuts a local street and, one, the right-of-way has a minimum width of 100 foot, or, two, the center line of the platted right-of-way is a minimum of 50 foot from the property line, the front yard setback may be reduced by up to 50%." So now, the way it's, it's proposed to be written, it would only be the property, the right-of-way that's directly in front of your property, that's either 100 foot or 50 foot from the center line, which means if someone across the street from me or down the street from me closed the right-of-way, it wouldn't affect my ability to reduce my front setback if I were developing this. This is something we're seeing used more and more frequently, especially with infill development happening around downtown. There've been a lot of infill development happening on local streets that have 100 foot of right-of-way that would benefit from this setback. So one other point that I'll make that is specific for infill development as well is the districts that it applies to. So we're expanding the districts to include all the ones that are written above, which is basically all of the rest of the zoning districts. We weren't able to find any reason why this exception wouldn't apply to any zoning district, but it didn't apply to any of the multifamily districts right now. So we're including all those multifamily districts, as well as the ag and industrial general, which wouldn't have many applications. Not many ag or industrial general sites are on a local street with 100 foot of right-of-way, so it wouldn't necessarily apply, but without a reason to exclude it, we went ahead and included all those districts. I'm sure I forgot to explain something, so please let me know if you have any questions.
You've actually done good so far.
Thank you.
Councilors, any questions?
A couple of weeks ago, we talked about, we approved a professional service agreement for Land Development Code Chapter 23 to be rewritten. Do I understand correctly that this is all part of that same chapter?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So is this sort of, I want to say, a Band-Aid for something that needs fixing immediately while that chapter is being revised?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So it's something that would affect multiple projects coming down the pipeline that we wanted to go ahead and work with to allow the exception to work for now. It also allows us to kind of see if the verbiage we have really does work, or if there are other things we should fix to incorporate in that bigger picture update, but this is just one of those things we wanted to fix ahead of time, but will also be incorporated into full code update.
Thank you.
And I'll, I'll add on that, that Kimberly's team, the City Attorney's Office spent a lot of time, her team reviewing this with us, looking at other practice, their best practice in code in other communities, and this is a, this was kind of a team effort, and we appreciate their help. But yeah, this is a way to not incentivize developers to try to close right-of-way. We want to protect our right-of-way, but allow the best practice development with their parking in the rear, so.
Thank you.
Anything further for staff? This time, I'll open the public hearing. I don't have anyone signed up for this item, but Mr. Goos would like to speak.
I forgot to fill out the form for this one, but again, Stephen Goos, Goos and Associates. I just wanted to let you all know that we've worked with Henry through the Builder Relations Committee on reviewing this, and I've professionally had a lot of clients do board of adjustment applications for these kind of things, but that has become more difficult in the last six months based on, I guess, some case law and things. So this is really, will help, like Henry said, is really west of Duck over to probably Orchard, 12th up to Sixth, and those old original plat areas of Stillwater with 100 foot of right-of-way. So I just want to, from the development community and the builders, that this is something that we support and are happy with the process that's happened, so.
Thank you. Anyone else planning to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Henry, was there a Planning Commission recommendation on this one?
Yes, sir. On November 4th, 2025, Planning Commission unanimously recommended that the City Council approve the text amendment as presented.
Thank you. Councilors?
Motion to accept Planning Commission's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. It's approved with a vote of four to zero. Item 6D, Receive Public Comment Regarding The Approval And Adoption Of The Update To The City's Comprehensive Plan Referred To As Envision Stillwater 2045 Comprehensive Plan, CC-25-168. Did we have good notice on this item?
Yes, we did.
Henry?
Yes, sir. So this is the first public hearing for the Stillwater Envision 2045, an update to our comprehensive plan. No action is being taken tonight, as there will be a second public hearing on December 15th, which is when a motion can be made to move this project forward or not. So this is just a public hearing to hear comments. Both myself and the consultant are here to answer any questions if you have any. So for the actual presentation, I'll hand it off to the consultant. Today, we have Don Thomas with Friesa Nichols to provide the presentation. Her team was the one that rewrote the comprehensive plan for us.
Good evening. All right, good evening. Thank you all for having me this evening to present the final draft of the comprehensive plan. I'm pleased to represent the project team, and the project team is much larger than just those of us that were on the consulting team that worked on this project. It was obviously the entire community of Stillwater, those of you on City Council that have seen us a couple of times and participated in this process, and will eventually take action on the project, the Planning Commission, city staff that have just stuck with us through the entire process, the advisory committee that was created and established with your, I guess, appointments early on, and then, of course, those of us that worked on the consulting team to bring you the information and the things to consider as we developed the plan. So what I want to do tonight is give you a brief overview of the project and sort of how we got to this point, hit on some of the key elements of public engagement, as well as the chapter goals for the various content chapters of the plan document, and then review a little bit on the implementation element too. So the Envision Stillwater 2045 Comprehensive Plan consists of eight chapters that you see here, sort of beginning with an existing conditions, elements, and walking through key components of the city, land use, transportation, housing and neighborhoods, economic development, community character, infrastructure, and then providing a kind of wrap-up on implementation with a series of recommendations. We started with a vision statement, which you see here, that took a little bit of crafting, but this is, this is the North Star for the comprehensive plan, and it is intended to be inclusive and representative of the community. Along with that North Star, we had guiding principles, connect, thrive, realize, and identify Stillwater. They have multiple meanings, but these were sort of overarching concepts that helped to shape the content of the plan and to provide some structure to it as well. Throughout the process, we brought the plan through a series of public as well as stakeholder meetings and discussions. Those are shown here, just beginning early on, and I think we met five times with the advisory committee. We conducted three large public engagement activities, in addition to an online survey and a consistent project website that remained active throughout the course of the project. So that's represented here. And just a little bit on the engagement, the initial public open house garnered attendance of about 80 people. We didn't have quite as large attendance at the land use workshop, but it was paired with an online element that provided the same information and opportunities to provide feedback. The final public open house, we had a little over 20 people there. Our survey garnered about 540 responses, and there was an element, an interactive component to the project website that allowed people to put markers on a map, and they provided multiple comments there, as well as free-form comments on what we called an ideas wall. So all of that public engagement fed into what we know about the community, helped us understand what the community wanted, and we were able to use that to develop the plan document. This summary shows you the contents of the snapshot chapter, which basically provides existing conditions and an understanding of the engagement and what that resulted in, which is the vision and guiding principles. Land use was based on a series of pieces of engagement and really to get information about what the community's desires are relative to mixed-use development, infill development. Those are the two charts on the left, and then on the right, access to either public or private services. This information was useful in scoping the various insights relative to public, relative to the land use components. What we learned is that people felt that mixed-use in appropriate locations was supported. Infill development is a good thing and should be supported and accommodated. People wanted better access to private and public services. So there are a series of goals for each chapter, and this is what we developed for the land use chapter. I won't read all of the content on the right side of the screen, but that really gets a little bit more detail to what we're talking about on the left. Ideally, we're putting together a plan that encourages and incentivizes efficient land use, a more walkable Stillwater, so more, more facilities for people, pedestrians, as well as bicyclists, although they're not walking, supporting economic development, also to create and support iconic destinations to ensure that those serve as key components to downtown development, as well as other locations in the community that are uniquely Stillwater, and also to prepare for modern, modern regulations. You all have already talked a little bit about that this evening, updating the development regulations to ensure that you can accomplish the things that this plan calls for is probably the most impactful first step of implementation that you can take. Transportation and mobility. So this talks more, talks about, of course, your Transportation and mobility, so this talks more, talks about, of course, your street network and how automobiles move around the community, but also brings in other elements of transportation, such as walkers and bicyclists and public transit. So should we expand or improve? Generally, yes. Should the city invest more in public transit? Generally, yes, or, well, on this one, I would say that's a split, a split sort of vote, so yes and not sure were the two primary responses there. Relative to having adequate quality and accessibility of sidewalks and bike paths, the consensus was that needs some work, and relative to the quality and utility of public transit, looks as though that was more on the not sure or no side of things. But we did hear from the community pretty soundly that they wanted to repair and reconstruct and utilize existing infrastructure before new is built. So the, the focus there, and I told the Planning Commission this, the folks in Stillwater are very practical. They, they want their facilities and the services that are provided to be solid, to be well-maintained, and to be consistent. So when we asked them to dream big, they're like, we want our streets to really work, and we want them to be efficiently utilized. So it's, not to say that they weren't dreaming big, but those are very practical desires for the community. Goals relative to transportation, maintain existing infrastructure, manage your traffic efficiently, serve citizens with transit, active transportation, that means being able to move around the community in different modes, walk, bike, get on transit, as well as move your vehicles, private vehicles, and anticipate and adapt is really a way to keep looking forward for innovative opportunities relative to your transportation network. Housing and neighborhoods, some of the things that were really focused on relative to feedback that we received was to broaden the mix of housing types that are available and supported through development regulations, allow for access, I can't say the word, accessory dwelling units, ADUs where appropriate. So some people said everywhere, others said most, and others said not sure, so that's, that's something that's fleshed out a little bit more within the land develop, within the land use categories. And talking about how important public and private services are to neighborhoods, again, both of those were identified as very important elements of well-rounded, complete neighborhoods. So also considering the goals for housing in neighborhoods, promoting infill developments, filling in the blank, filling in the gaps, that kind of also speaks to the efficient use of your infrastructure, streamlining review and permitting processes. That'll be addressed, I'm sure, through your code update, diversifying housing stock, improving walkability, and enhancing housing conditions. That one speaks a lot to property maintenance and code enforcement, as well as development activity. Moving on to economic development and redevelopment, we, we asked people about their ideas for where mixed use would be appropriate, primarily downtown, and then a few other locations kind of came out fairly equally. How important is infill development? And that was deemed to be very or somewhat important almost exclusively. Goals relative to economic development, there are multiple different entities that deal with economic development in the community today, so we have identified building a vision, working together to get a clear direction that is, that is consensus-built through those various partners, making sure that they're aligned. Build unique places, places that the residents want to go are also places that your visitors will want to go. So the idea is to focus on things that improve the quality of life for your residents and also will draw that tourism and other individuals to the community. Increase employment, that is really addressing not only retaining sort of the, the high, the high-level graduates that are coming out of OSU, making sure that there are opportunities for them to work here in the community and not necessarily have to take that education with them and maybe not come back, but then also, you know, providing opportunities for your, your general employment base, as well as new graduates, and investing in quality of life. That kind of goes back a little bit to the building unique places concept. Speaking of character, community character, arts and culture, goals that we identified here, beautify Stillwater. Stillwater has, has great locations, there are opportunities to make improvements in things like gateways and other types of elements or improvements to the public realm. Investing in the public realm gives you the opportunity to do that in a space that you can control, so that the city is one of the biggest property owners in the city, in that the right-of-way and public space is typically publicly owned and gives you an opportunity to make some of those enhancements. Unify branding and a civic identity. We know that the city has initiated some work relative to a branding and wave, branding and wayfinding types of improvements, so we feel like that's, that's on a good track. Empower and connect local champions. There are a lot of folks that just absolutely live and breathe Stillwater, I guess, you know, they breathe and bleed orange, so making sure that you have the ability to draw them in and give them things to do and ways to engage in the community will, will help. It just helps the stickiness of a place to give people some ways to connect that are real meaningful, and improving health outcomes. We have a section in this chapter that really talks about a healthy community and some of the ways that Stillwater might be able to improve healthy outcomes for their citizens and visitors. The last content chapter is infrastructure, public facilities and services, and in this, we had some ideas wall, that's the free-form comments on the website, comments there were really focused on transportation and parks largely, and then we asked if there was a need for more investment in the look and feel of streetscapes. 70% said yes. The chart on the right is from our initial public open house. We asked about things like the moving from the left to the right, emergency services, got high marks, good variety of art and cultural and historical facilities, got pretty high marks, a community that has community centers and facilities that meet my needs, got neutral to high, and then City Hall is welcoming, a welcoming place to visit, got neutral to high remarks also. So goals relative to infrastructure and public facilities, maximize the use of your existing infrastructure, this is the theme, you've seen it and heard it before, diversify water supply, we know that's been an issue in the city, and so we wanted to make note of that, provide some recommendations relative to that, create nodes of public infrastructure, this is an opportunity to use some of that public space to possibly co, co-locate different public facilities, could be a savings for the city with regard to maintenance and oversight, but also to customers, residents who are utilizing those facilities where possible. That, that could look like a police substation in a park, for instance. Ensuring that all levels of service can be met, that, that varies based upon the different utilities and services, and preparing for hazards. We know you have a hazard mitigation plan that feeds into making sure that your community is ready to bounce back and to bounce back better from impacts. This all culminates in the implementation section, where we have kind of given you what we call a roadmap or an action plan for implementing your developer, for implementing your comprehensive plan. There are 84 recommendations, they span all of the different planned chapters or topics, and they're organized in what you see here with a recommendation number on the far left that corresponds with the chapter. So in this case, you've got three recommendations related to land use, the action item or description, how the, what the timeframe is for implementation, the type of action that is called for, and then key entity or partnerships, that could also be called the champion, whomever's going to kind of see through, see that through to the, to conclusion. The orange numbers that you see in the middle, those indicate priorities. So timeframes are outlined in short, mid, and long term, and those things that are ongoing. Priorities 1, 2, and 3 really are intended to give you a guide as to how to focus city resources. So priority number one, those are the things that have the most urgent need, less urgent or secondary need falls into priority number two, and things that are least urgent for an investment focus, and that probably are things that are going to be, you're going to need to be a little more strategic about them and line them up over a course of probably years as opposed to months, are the things that are identified as priority number three. The action types reflect basically the kind of action or kind of resource that you're going to need in order to accomplish the various tasks, and so it might be updating regulations, you'll see a lot of things related to that. It might be a capital investment or an administrative action, or something like a partner or partnership or a policy. And that is what I have for you as an overview of the comp plan. I hope that gave you a good flavor for what, what we put together. We did present this to the Planning Commission on November 18th, they provided a unanimous recommendation. I just want to say thank you for bearing with us and working through this project. We feel like we've got a good plan here for you that will carry you through the next several years, if not decade or more, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much. Councillors, questions?
So documents like this tend to resemble in many ways the prior document and the document before that, there's a lot of continuity when it comes to plans, right? What are some of the things in this plan that are significantly different moving forward for us?
I feel like you've got a very different action implementation chapter in this one. The previous plan did a pretty good job of identifying specific capital projects that were anticipated or desirable. Not a lot of them actually were done, because over the course of time, it was determined that there were different priorities. So while some of our recommendations may be more general, they do have the ability to sort of span time a little bit, probably withstand time a little bit more. We also really focused on giving specific direction in the land use elements, land use categories, you've got a broader menu of land use categories that will hopefully help to guide your comprehensive, your code update and give you the ability to be more specific as to how you reset those regulations to accomplish the things, the development patterns, and the type of environment that is intended to be created in response to this plan. So I think those are two big pieces. We, we did a full housing study with this, it's an appendix to the plan, and so the housing recommendations are based not only on, you know, what we see in the community, but also on what was researched and established as market demand and supply and where you have gaps. So I think those are some of the things that I'd point out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your work on this as well. I, I actually really, I enjoyed reading the whole 200 and some odd pages, but one of the things I, one of the things I noticed, and I was a little surprised by, and you have done these for other municipalities, and so you could speak to this, in looking at all the action items and how they were ranked, more than half of them are high, are priority one.
Yeah.
And so I guess my question was, you know, so there's 47 priority ones of those 84 action items, is, is that common, or do we, do we really have that much we need to be working, working on that are really high priorities? And, and I found myself looking at this and going, okay, well, so what really are the really, really high priorities of that group?
The 1As.
Yes.
The 1As. That's a, that's a great question. We, we did have a workshop session with the advisory committee, and we also kind of ran this through staff and had them scrub it with regard to what they felt would be the most applicable prioritization. So I won't blame them, but I will say that they contributed to the way that this, that way this kind of rolled out. Some of those priorities are already underway. Some of those priorities have been initiated through other projects, so we even talked about a couple of those tonight, but others are not real heavy lifts, they just need to be on the list and get done. So it's, it made, it was kind of important just to get them on paper to make sure that that, that became somebody's responsibility. The other thing is that on an annual basis, I recommend that the council and the Planning Commission and staff review the comprehensive plan, make sure that you're still aligned with the direction that it's leading you and that you've got, you know, that information and policy support from, from the community, but you're going to be wrangling resource allocation and budgets and things like that every year. So annually, it's a good idea to take a look at it. Every five years, it's a good idea to really consider whether or not, you know, your list is getting short and you may need to modify things. When you, when you do any of those updates or reviews, it's a good time to take a look at the prioritization and make sure that, you know, you're not dropping things. The city can do a lot, and they, they can, they can walk, the staff can walk and chew gum at the same time. I think that what you'll find is that a lot of these 47 priority one items are things that kind of fall into daily operations and that will just be folded into the way that things are done. That is my hope, that is what I believe the conversation has been, so hopefully that is responsive.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just jump in on that, because that, that session we had to try to figure out how to prioritize these things was, I think we made it through like three of them.
It was hairy. We had deep discussions about some.
Deep discussion. But, but one of the things that, you know, we were focused on was trying to, was, because a lot of these, if you, you know, as you read through them, there's a lot of them that dovetail together, you know, that, that one initiative will check five or six of them off the list. But we wanted to make sure, I think one of the really important things for this, and this speaks to the, the comment you made to Councillor Clark's question, that there is real implementation work to be done. So many of these plans that are listed at the beginning that the, that we've had here over the years, I think would meet the statement of, there was a lot of stuff that was said that we were going to do that none of it ever really got done, although Walk 34 was in one of those plans, you know, 25 years ago.
Way long ago.
And it finally happened, so the timelines are long, the timelines are long. But all that to say, I do, I, I feel good about this list of specific items, because it does give us something that we as council can go to staff and say, okay, what does this initiative do for our comprehensive plan priorities, right? What, if we're going to be talking about this Chapter 23 rewrite, how many of these things is it going to address? And when we're looking at a Chapter 23 rewrite, we can be looking at this list, too, and say, okay, how does that support low impact or, you know, low impact development patterns and preservation of natural resources? Like, how's that, you know, brought in here? And so I think it gives us a good guide of things to be looking at as a council, and it gives councils for the next 25 years, things to be looking at and saying, okay, how does this meet the, the plan in a, in a much more concrete way than I feel we've had, at least in my time on council, we've referred to the comprehensive plan by the future land use map, and that was just about it. And I think this list is stuff that we're going to be talking about and referring to with staff for many years into the future, because it, it does give us a more concrete touch point on, on the plan.
Where your current staff reports for zoning, for instance, the ones you've seen earlier today, have a specific reference to the comp plan, I think you could have the same references to budget requests or to policy changes and other types of actions that, as a community and representing the community, you want to understand how they plug into the overall policy document for the city.
Okay, very good.
Thanks so much, Don.
Thank you.
It's been, this has been a ton of work right now for your team and for the staff and for lots of people over the last several months, more than a year, and I really am excited about the, the product that we have at this point, and, you know, the, the value that it will provide to the City Council and to the city staff moving forward. So thank you so much for the work that you've put in.
We're pleased if you're pleased. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Well, this is a public hearing about the comprehensive plan, so at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Shockingly, I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this public hearing either, but if anyone's here wanting to make public comment about the comprehensive plan, now's your Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, and we will have a follow-up second public hearing on this same item on the 15th, at which point we will potentially have action on the item.
Yes, there will be a resolution for consideration of your approval to adopt the new plan at that City Council meeting.
Thanks so much. All right, that takes us to item 7 on our agenda, general orders, 7A Airport Parking Lot Plans Discussion As Presented To The Stillwater Regional Airport Advisory Board And Possible Action To Provide Direction To Staff.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Kelly Reed, Airport Director. Let me find my presentation here. All right, I would like to talk to you about our airport parking lots and give you an airport parking overview overall throughout the airport, show you where we've been, where we are now, and some plans and goals for the future. So what you see here is a map and image of what airport parking looked like for most of our commercial service of our nine years of air service. You'll see multiple lots here designated with different numbers. Those numbers are not the numbers we're using moving forward, but what you see here is a total of 342 parking spots. I will say, most of the time, our lots are mostly full. So we do very much use what we have, and we often have a shortage of parking. Also, you'll see there the, what we call the gravel lot. It's noted as Lot 5 in this image. This is our shared use lot with the ball field. And here's another image of what you just saw, which is the existing terminal with the blue arrow. The new terminal is in the former Hangar 1 location with the orange arrow, and you can see that large gravel lot. One of the issues that we've had moving into the terminal construction is the condition of that gravel lot. We're very thankful to Public Works for their outstanding support recently in helping us provide some improvements to this lot that hadn't seen work in a while. So you can see in the photo on the left, there's a lot of vegetation been growing up over time and more mud than gravel. So they've helped us bring in some new gravel, regrade those lots, and we've completed two of the three phases for that lot. So next week is our final phase, and we look forward to having that improved. This is an aerial of what's to come with the terminal project. So again, with the blue arrow on the top left, you can see the existing terminal. The new terminal is there mid-left in white. And then here's an overview of the new roadway that we're working on now. So we're going to relocate Airport Industrial Access Road, develop the four-lane drop-off in front of the terminal. You see the roundabout there at the intersection of Wright Drive and Airport Road. And then in between the old road and the new road are two new parking lots. One of those is an improvement to the existing lot, and then the other, we'll look at those more closely. The other is a larger lot that's going to be a new addition. So I've got the lots numbered here. I realize it's hard to see in that image, but we'll hone in on two of these lots. We've made some changes due to this new terminal layout. So you can see the existing terminal lot, which is noted as Lot 1. Let me bring up a pointer here. So Lot 1 here had some changes to allow access to continue to be available to the existing terminal. This lot had two drives. We reduced that down to one and widened it for the terminal development. The old lot here, the old access to that lot went away. So we did experience a slight reduction in parking in this lot. But what we have here is our existing main terminal parking lot. This soon-to-be-considered-for-development Lot 2. We're calling this the North Triangle Parking Lot. This item is also on the agenda tonight for our grant application to Oklahoma Department of Aerospace and Aeronautics, who's generally offered to support 95% of the funding of this lot with a 5% city match. Our goal, if we're successful in this grant application, is to have this new lot completed by terminal opening. So that's increasing from 43 spots to 68 spots in that lot. Lot 3 is planned to be allocated from FAA funding that we plan to seek next summer. This is an addition to our parking. So that lot is 165 new spots. And then Lot 4 is our gravel lot that will remain as a gravel lot. And then Lot 5 you see over here is our rental car parking. So one of our goals and hopes as we move forward with this parking development overall is to consider revenue parking opportunities. So we're one of four commercial service airports in the state. We're the only commercial service airport that does not charge for parking. So our goal is to consider developing revenue parking lots at the airport. Lots 1 and 2, as you can see in the picture here, are the two lots we'd like to consider for that. Lot 1 being the existing lot, and Lot 2 being the lot we're pursuing, redeveloping with those ODAA funds that we'll have for you next on the agenda. So traditionally, airport parking is the highest revenue source for airports for non-aeronautical parking, so something outside the airport fence. So it's a significant monetary support for the airport, revenue support to have revenue parking. Let me go back a slide. This FAA lot is planned to be, to continue to be a free parking asset, and the gravel lot is also expected to continue to be free into the long-term future. So while we are looking at those two, developing revenue parking or looking at plans for developing revenue parking, we will still continue to offer ample free parking in the two larger lots. Are there any questions?
Counselors?
I do have a question. Right now, you have handicap parking in Lot 1, I think you call it. Will that continue? Where will handicap parking go?
It does. So the terminal design engineers and architects ensure that we meet adequate ADA requirements for all of the parking lots. So Lot 1 or the existing terminal lot will continue to have ADA parking. Lot 2 also has ADA parking. It has nine spots. Lot 3 will have six spots.
Will that be free parking in Lot 1?
We are reviewing what that looks like in the two revenue lots, whether or not the handicap or the ADA spots would be revenue or non-revenue. We are working with a consultant to look at a revenue study overall for what this could mean for the airport in terms of revenue and whether or not those spots would be included as in that study.
I remember a conversation we had some months, maybe a year ago. If we have governmental funding for a parking lot, we could not charge for that lot. Is that correct? Has it changed?
For FAA funding, correct. So FAA typically does not provide funding for revenue for any parking lot in an airport, but we do fall into the category of non-hub commercial service airports, which means we're small enough to be considered for that need with the caveat that it has to remain non-revenue. So that Lot 3, this bigger lot, is planned for non-revenue, for free parking.
So 50 years from now, Lot 3 will never be revenueed because it was FAA funded.
The FAA requirement is for the useful life of the lot, so for the next 20 years. After 20 years, we could consider revenue parking or if we wanted to reimburse the FAA for that grant.
Okay, thank you.
Did I understand correctly that Lot 2 is the current lot, and it would just be expanded?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So we have to close that lot for a period of time. Current estimates are five weeks, five to eight weeks, I think, for construction of that lot.
Have we looked at, for comparable airports, what types of rates they charge for parking?
We have. Tulsa and Oklahoma City are our two closest airports, so we look closely at their rates. They both have economy lots, short-term lots, long-term lots at a variety of different rates. But that's one of the things we look at is if we do charge revenue being fair and equitable with other commercial airports or similar airports.
Thank you.
Do they have any free parking at Tulsa and Oklahoma City?
They do not. Neither does Lot 1.
But I think that's a, I mean, it's certainly been a selling point for the airport and something that will help us compete, helps us compete when this, you know, tell people, you got to drive an hour, hour and a half to another airport. You got to pay for parking and all that. And so it's great that we have it and that we're planning to continue to have it. But I do also get comments from people all the time that say, I would love to pay for parking if it was, if I knew I would get a spot that's closer, if I could get covered parking, if I could get, you know. There are folks who would be willing to pay a premium, I think, to park closer or to have some amenity as part of the parking. And so I think it's great for staff to continue to look into, you know, what that might look like. As long as, and it feels very clear, you know, with the gravel lot and that FAA lot, that there will still be a lot of free parking at Stillwater Airport. I think it makes a ton of sense for us to say, well, maybe we could research some revenue alternatives that might add a little bit to the bottom line for this, for the airport.
Correct. The majority of our parking would still remain free. There's 210 spots in the gravel lot, and then 165 planned spots in Lot 3.
How many did you say we have fully now? 350?
342 pre-construction. We saw a small reduction, but we'll have about approximately 500 once we're complete.
With all of this?
Correct.
That just seems like a whole lot of spots to be as full as they are for a flight that holds 56 people.
65.
There might be a reason for that.
I mean, I guess there's a lot of people who are parked there for several days while they're out, but is there, I assume there's some kind of study that is done in terms of how much parking an airport this size needs?
Correct. In our master plan and in the terminal development plans, it was looked at to forecast what the terminal requires for the next 50 years. And the parking developed in these plans meets those needs.
Because I mean, it's most, I mean, it's full. The paved lots are almost always full. But the gravel lot's not, I don't feel like it's, I've never gotten into it and felt like it was all the way to the back. But I suppose it is sometimes.
We've had a lot of years.
I have a couple of times.
I mean, I love that. That's great. That means people are using the airport. That's fantastic. But I'm, yeah, I mean, this looks to me like a great direction that we're heading to figure out, you know, how to serve both folks who want to have the free parking available and those folks who would be willing to pay a little bit to have a little bit more of a premium experience. And so what else do you need from us?
We plan to come back in the future when we have, when we've completed our revenue study and have more data and information to provide regarding revenue and what we could, what projections we are expecting to see.
Sounds good. Thank you.
You can stay right there because Item 7B is consideration and possible action to approve the award of contracts by Seymour Lippert Brothers for Project Work Package Number 5, the North Triangle Parking Lot.
Correct. So this is to help us move forward with that North Triangle Parking Lot that we just looked at, that Lot 2 you saw in the image. The Seymour's here tonight if anyone has any questions. The Seymour Amendment is our, the Seymour Agreement is our contractual document with the construction manager at risk to help us build and develop the entirety of the terminal project and all of the associated phases. So the North Triangle Parking Lot is our next step in that. Lippert Brothers has been helping us bid and provided a bid recommendation for that North Triangle Parking Lot low bidder. And so this is Project Work Package Number 5 we're reviewing tonight. And I have Shane Van Osten from Lippert Brothers if there are any questions.
So, I mean, my question is if we award this, is this going to, you said that they would plan to get this done before the terminal opens?
Correct.
What happens with the loss of this in the meantime? Where, I mean, that's how many, 40-some spots in there now?
Correct. My understanding is we expect to close that lot for approximately five to eight weeks to accommodate construction. Construction could begin as early as January or February. We're in the winter season, so we may experience some weather delays, but...
I mean, what happens with the parking?
We close that lot and rely more heavily on the gravel lot. The hope is to have that lot back open before spring break, which is one of our busier seasons.
Sounds like fun.
Sounds like construction.
Counselors, any further questions? What's your recommendation for us, Kelly?
We have a motion to approve the award of contracts by the Seymour Lippert Brothers Incorporated for Project Work Package Number 5, which is the North Triangle Parking Lot for the Stillwater Regional Airport Terminal and Improvements Projects. Also approve Amendment Number 5 to the Seymour Agreement, which includes a partial conversion to the guaranteed maximum price in the amount of $633,308 for the relevant portion of work identified in Project Work Package 5 and authorize the city manager to sign the amendment and related exhibits A1 and C5.
Counselors?
I move approval to staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please vote. It's approved with a vote of four to zero. Excited to see the progress out there. It's really great. Every time I drive out to the airport, I'm just anticipating more and more, getting into that building and seeing the wonderful stuff. Item 8, Resolutions. Resolution Number CC-2025-31, a resolution of the Stillwater City Council approving the submission of an application for an Oklahoma Department of Aerospace and Aeronautics Airport Construction Program Grant Funds for improvements at Stillwater Regional Airport, approving the associated budget amendments for the required sponsor match, and authorizing the mayor or vice mayor to execute all necessary project documents.
So this is the grant that Kelly just mentioned, the ODAA Airport Construction Program, state grant funds that the Stillwater Regional Airport intends to apply for in support of construction of the new North Triangle Parking Lot. The estimated total project cost is $680,508. The anticipated cost share is ODAA state grant funds in the amount of $646,482, and City of Stillwater 5% required sponsor match of $34,026. Approval of this resolution, approve submission of the grant application. It approves the attached budget amendments to appropriate the required sponsor match and also authorizes the mayor or the vice mayor to execute any necessary project documents.
I move adoption of Resolution CC-2025-31.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Please vote. Resolution's adopted with a vote of four to zero. Item 8B is Resolution Number CC-2025-32, which has sister resolutions on the other two meetings tonight. This is a resolution authorizing signatories for depositaries.
Yes, this resolution is just administrative in nature. The only change that's being made is the authorized signatories for the municipal court. It's changed due to staffing changes.
Counselors?
Motion to adopt Resolution CC-2025-32.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Please vote. It's adopted with a vote of four to zero. Item 9 is ordinances. On first read, ordinance 3586, an ordinance rezoning attractive land located at 711 South Ramsey Street from small lot, single-family residential to two-family and multifamily. This is from earlier this evening.
I move to advance ordinance 3586.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance ordinance 3586 to second read. Please vote. The vote of four to zero, that ordinance is advanced to second reading. On first reading, we have ordinance 3587, an ordinance rezoning attractive land located at 998 South Murphy Street from small lot, single-family residential and commercial general to commercial general, also from this evening.
Motion to advance ordinance 3587.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. The vote of four to zero, ordinance 3587 is advanced to second reading. On first reading, we have ordinance 3589, an ordinance amending Chapter 23 Land Development Code, Article 6, Land Use Classifications, to amend or to add a setback exception in Division 3 Residential Districts, Sections 23-136 through 23-142 and 23.144 Division 4 Commercial Districts, Section 23-150 through 23-153 Division 5 Industrial Districts, Section 23-160 through 23-161, and Division 6 Agricultural District, Public District and University Districts, Section 23-170. Counselors?
Motion to advance ordinance number 3589.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance the ordinance. Please vote. Ordinance is advanced with a vote of four to zero. Item 10 is appointments. The Stillwater Airport Advisory Board, who has been doing great work helping us out at the airport. There are two members on that board whose terms are expiring. Both are interested in being reappointed to new three-year terms, which would expire in January 2029. So I move that we reappoint Derek Davies and Phil Thomas two terms on the Stillwater Regional Airport Advisory Board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, Derek Davies and Phil Thomas are reappointed to the Airport Advisory Board. We thank you so much for their service. We thank them for their service and appreciate what they do. Reports from the officers of the board. Ms. Carley?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Moore?
Yes, city offices will be closed on Thursday, December 25th for Christmas and Thursday, January 1st for New Year's Day. Please remember, just like last week with the Thanksgiving holiday, the Waste Management Calendar is adjusted for these holidays. So for the weeks of Christmas and New Year's, normal trash and recycling pickup will be delayed by one day. For example, your trash, normal trash day is Thursday. For example, your trash, normal trash day is Thursday, it'll now be Friday, and Friday will now be Saturday. Also, for residents who have a live Christmas tree during the holiday season, after the holiday, they can bundle up their tree and place it at the curb as part of the city's regular yard waste collection, free of charge. I think it's a great service that we provide. I do think this next note is funny. All decorations must be removed. And bundles must be less than four feet long, so maybe it was a rough Christmas, you just want to throw it all out at once, but yeah, those decorations need to be removed, so...
Including all the tinsel, right?
That's right.
Every single piece of tinsel.
For more information or our collection schedule that I was talking about earlier, feel free to go to our website, which has great information, at stillwaterok.gov/wastemanagement.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Hawkins?
It is time to vote for your favorite utility box art program winners. The Stillwater Public Art Committee has narrowed the entries down to 10, and it is our job as a community to determine the top five. The voting period is now through the end of Sunday, December 14th. To vote, go to stillwaterart.org. This year's theme is Stillwater Strong, and as you can see, that applies in many areas throughout our community and subject to the artist's interpretation. We appreciate everyone's participation in this annual program. And I was just driving by one of our utility boxes tonight and thought, this is such a great program. So everybody, go vote.
Just looking at those finalists up on the screen there, it's going to be tough to pick. We need some more utility boxes and just put them all up. Counselor Clark?
It is once again time to purchase rural fire service contracts if you live outside the city limits but within the Stillwater Fire Department's response area. For an annual fee of $200, the contract ensures that response fees for each fire incident on a contracted property will not exceed $2,000. Residents will still receive rural fire assistance without a contract, but will be responsible for paying the full rural fire service fee for any services rendered. All collected fees go toward training, rescue tools, and other fire equipment. To sign up or for more information, go to stillwaterok.gov/ruralfire or call 405-742-8308.
Thanks, sir. Counselor Harden?
This holiday season, Stillwater Animal Welfare reminds those who are considering shopping to add a furry friend. Please adopt, not shop. If you'd like to see what dogs and cats are in need of a good hum, please stop by Animal Welfare Building at 1710 South Main Street, or follow Stillwater Animal Welfare on Facebook, or call 405-372-0334. Staff members post regular updates on Facebook about available animals, educational tips, and animal health guidance. And if you look at the website, you'll go adopt some, there's some really cute dogs out there.
Thank you. I will remind you that you can join us this week at the annual Stillwater Parade of Lights on Thursday in downtown Stillwater. Festivities begin at 6:30 PM with candy and music, and then the parade will start at 7:00. Also, on Saturday, December 6th, from 6:30 to 8:30 PM, we will have festive skies with our Holiday Heroes Drone Shows at Block 34. There will be so many fun activities, including the Stillwater High School Choir caroling at 6:30, on the kicker soundstage, pictures with Santa after the first drone show, ice skating on Irby Lane, snow globes, and food vendors. The drone shows will be at 7:00 PM and 8:00 PM, and I think there's two slightly different drone shows, so you can stay and watch them both, which is great. Many thanks to our sponsors. Visit Stillwater and the Stillwater Chamber of Commerce for helping us with these great events. We look forward to seeing many of our residents and visitors this week for Holiday Fun in Anything further? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the Stillwater City Council. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, the Stillwater City Council is now adjourned. This time, I'll call to order the Stillwater Utilities Authority Meeting for December 1st, 2025. Trustees, is there action on the consent docket?
I move approval with consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent. Please vote. The consent docket on SUA is approved with a vote of four to zero. We have a resolution, Resolution SUA-2025-9. This is the sister resolution of the Signatories Resolution. Is there action on this item?
Motion to adopt Resolution SUA-2025-9.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Resolution SUA-2025-9 is adopted with a vote of four to zero. Any reports? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, the Stillwater Utilities Authority Meeting is now adjourned. And at this time, I'll call to order the Stillwater Economic Development Authority Meeting for December 1st, 2025. Trustees, questions, comments, or action on the consent docket?
Motion to approve consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Consent docket's approved with a vote of four to zero. Item 5 is Resolution CETA-2025-5.
I move adoption of ordinance CETA-2025-5.
Resolution.
Resolution. What did I say?
You said ordinance.
Oh, excuse me, resolution.
We know what you meant.
Second.
But we want it in the minutes, right?
You beat me to it.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution CETA-2025-5. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, that resolution is adopted. Any reports? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.